These are our rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats, unless denials or conditional approvals are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or the community development staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their request, and then proponents and opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. An applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will vote and discuss, or discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous matter. Items listed in the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in the city government. Assistant listening devices are available for meetings in this room. To better serve you when possible, please notify the city at least three business days in advance at (283) 4209, should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on media cable channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation to and from City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled by DART Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call DART on call scheduling at (283) 8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. At this time, it appears that we have a quorum. I think everybody here is wonderful. And so is there any action on the, our minutes from our October 3 meeting?
On move, approval.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the October 3 Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand.
A abstain.
Okay. And abstentions. And of course, you've got that. Are there any nay votes? All right, seeing none, the minutes are approved. Thank you. All right, at this time, we have two items on our consent agenda. I'll read those items and see if there's anyone that's here that wishes to hear these. Item number one is a city-initiated request with regard to the proposed 38th and Grand Urban Renewal Plan. And that is determination as to whether the proposed 38th and Grand Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with Plan Des Moines, Creating Our Tomorrow Plan, and amending the Plan Des Moines, Creating Our Tomorrow Plan, to revise future land use designation from high-density residential within a community node to neighborhood mixed use within a community node for property located at 3750 Grand Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to pull this item from consent tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to hear this item? All right, that item will remain on consent. Item number two is a request from Des Moines Area Community College for actions related to property at 1031 and 1039 Ninth Street. This will be determination as to whether the proposed rezoning and the PUD conceptual plan amendment are in accordance with the Plan Des Moines, Creating Our Tomorrow Plan, and rezoning property from our four multifamily residential district to a PUD development, and a review and approval of an amendment to the Human Services Campus PUD Conceptual Plan for property in the vicinity of 1111 Ninth Street to expand the PUD conceptual plan area to include the property request of rezoning and extend the existing surface parking lot. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to pull this item from consent? All right, seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to hear this item? Okay, so those two items are both on consent. Is there any action?
On move, consent.
Thank you. All those in favor of consent items one and two, please signify by raising your hand. All right, are there any nays? Okay, thank you very much. And so now we'll go to our public hearing item tonight. This is a request from the Iowa Labor's Education Training Trust Fund for review and approval of the following regarding property located in the vicinity of 4560 Hubble Avenue. Additional property is in the PUD bound, additional property in the PUD boundary is owned by Baker Real Estate, Baker Creeks in Your Living, McKinley Crest, and BMB Real Estate Group.
Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. The aerial being displayed identifies the boundary of the entire PUD, Baker PUD. The area of focus for tonight is the northeast corner, which is double-hatched. That's what is driving our agenda item tonight. The cards are being passed around. This is the response map. The, as noted in the staff report, the Baker PUD has been amended many different times. I think just to make sure we're all on the same page as the process or the different stages that's going through, I want to show you a few images just of previous renditions, including something you saw this summer for an amendment, and then we can kind of move in. That's kind of where we were, then we'll talk about where we are today, and then a recommendation for moving to the future. So the PUD was amended in 2011 to add these residential components to the upper part of the, kind of the northeast area, the apartment complex, and then buy-attached units were proposed. And that happened 2011, some of the apartments have been constructed. And then this summer, we saw an application for the, kind of the southern, west, southwestern balance of the PUD for single-family development. That moved forward and was approved. This is a, the version of the drawings you had in your packet in July. There were obviously some conditions, but this just gives you a sense of how that was laid out. And the only thing I want to point out is that when we did discuss this proposal, we did spend a lot of time talking about the PUD in its entirety and the mix of housing types that were already approved, and how that related or did not relate to what should be done on this part of the PUD. So that's where we've been, where we are today. I'll show a couple photographs. This is looking towards the west, back into the site, so this is the eastern boundary of the site, the street, the development that's proposed would be fronting. I see some of the, the trees are noted in the drawings and also some of the residential properties. This is looking a little bit more north. This is the submitted conceptual plan prepared by the applicant's team. You can see the, that multifamily phase in the middle. There is a sheet that also identifies this phase, the single-family phase, and then the proposed training facility. I'll, I'll let them elaborate on all the activities that go, would go on in the, the location, but from a zoning perspective, a future land use map perspective, this is an industrial use, and I think they're better equipped to speak to their operation. The development would include a single building. Some of the training activities would take place in the building, some outdoors. It would be a metal-sided building, kind of a simple industrial building. Wayne's Code is proposed on a couple of the facades you can see in the lower portions of the building. The, there's really, as the chair read the agenda, we have kind of a two-step process. We have to first look at our future land use map, the city's comprehensive plan, and determine, does the proposal comply with that? And if not, do we need to amend that? This is a, in order to approve the rezoning. So this is a map identifying the proposed land use plan amendment up in this corner from medium-density residential to industrial designation. And then this is probably a little easier read, showing the medium density that's over the apartments and the, this part of the PUD that's being discussed tonight, and then the low family residential that was approved recently, and then some of the other commercial designations, multifamily. The purple is business park. As staff and for us, when we look at a rezoning request, you know, one of our first things that we ask ourselves is, does it comply with a comprehensive plan? And if not, how do we feel, or what, does the proposed or the necessary amendment make sense to us? And in this case, we do not believe it makes sense. This is a high-traffic corridor. We had a lot of discussion in July about having a dense residential along here and whether or not the single-family made sense. That moved forward, like I said, partially under the thought that we should provide a mix of housing types here, and that we already had some density. But from our perspective, it's not a location to do an industrial, you know, to amend the map to add an industrial use. There are business park designations in the area that, that is, you know, of a different level or standard than industrial designation. So that is the premise of our staff rec. Be happy answering questions you might have.
Questions for Jason? All right, thank you. Seeing none, then, at this time, if the applicant would like to come forward, and if you could, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Mike Weckman. We are based at 3400 East Euclid, Des Moines. I am the Business Manager of Labor's Book 177. I'm also a trustee for the Iowa Labor's Education Training Fund. In, in the area that we're seeking the rezoning from medium-density residential to industrial, we are a nonprofit, and we are definitely not industrial. So we have to follow the codes of the city as we are considered commercial. So what we will be doing is training our members. We have 1,000 members around the Des Moines metro. In this ward alone, we have 254 members. Those who, many have worked on this building alone. We're building downtown, we're working, many of our contractors have been in business for over 100 years. We've been in the city for over 100 years. In the late 90s, we had a training facility down in Truro, Iowa, and that's where it resided until two years ago. We decided to sell that property to move back to Des Moines to be closer to our membership. And this is with support from our contractors, from Newman Brothers, Ryan Companies, Whites, Graham Construction, Briholz, Mackinich, Correll, Elder, The Underground, Herbert Construction, many of whom do work here in the Des Moines area and employ our members. So when we say industrial, I hope that you don't see us as an industrial company. That is not what we do. This is going to be a training school. We will do hands-on training. We have management here with us tonight, Jim Piazza with the Heavy Highway Contractors Association. And to go to, I'm going to bounce back and forth here to kind of talk about our conceptual plan. Usually, we're the ones building the buildings. We're not here asking for rezoning, so this isn't typical on, on what we do, but we are asking for your recommendation to the council to rezone. So what we have here is the copy of the building, which we proposed, with being a nonprofit, outside of what the PUD called for, which was a metal structure with a metal outside. The trustees of the Iowa Labor's Education Training Fund met yesterday, and we know what we need to do inside the PUD, and we will comply with any building materials inside the PUD. So if it's tilt-up, brick, glass, whatever we need to do, we understand that inside this, in the PUD, that metal's not going to cut. So we get that, and I hope you take that into consideration. With the, the forestry, if you look at the single-family or the, the middle density that would be going in, there would be loss all along the outsides and even along the 46th Street, where we're going to preserve all of the timber. We're going to help with the 4 Mile watershed, putting in the retention areas. Upon approval, we'll work with a general contractor. If we get approval at that time, we'll hire a general contractor who will be working with the city on what we can and cannot do. If we need to add more watershed, we'll add more watershed. With us residing at 3400 East Euclid, we understand what happens down 4 Mile. We were flooded July of '17, so whatever we can prevent up the creek, we will help. And we, with the neighborhood meeting, we heard a lot of those complaints from the neighbors. If there was housing to go in here, that they, they feel that that would slow up the water and back it up on them even further. We want to work with the city. We want to work with the residents around to help the watershed flow freely and hopefully keep it flowing on downs and south. With the forestry round, we would be adding additional on the areas where, I believe the pictures you showed here. The gentleman had pictures that showed this area where you could see a residential home. We would propose to add more buffering. And this portion of the property, we've already closed, we've already purchased this property, and this was given to the adjacent landowner. We feel that this would not negatively impact the character of the PUD, but it'd help beautify and add character and be a significant addition to the PUD. We understand that there is a transit corridor through there with bringing in the folks that we're training. We train City of Des Moines employees. We represent the City of Des Moines employees. We represent the folks at the WRA. We do onsite training at the WRA, so we feel this would be more of a partnership with the city. We are stewards of our communities, so bringing this back to the Des Moines area is, is key for our membership and for our local union. So just some key points that I'd like to leave you with is that the industrial definition is not us. We are a training school. When we get into the training, most of it is indoors. We will do some outdoor. We are not equipment operators. We are not the operating engineers, Local 234. We will not have earth movers. The only time we'll have earth movers onsite is when we develop the site, so we will not have excavators, dozers, scrapers doing training of any sort. The hours of operation that we do our training are during daylight hours, so during the summer, they may go a little longer. With the Board of Trustees meeting that we had yesterday, we are ready to have the training fund only do hours of operation from 7:00 to 4:30, 7:00 to 5:30. Again, we want to work with the community. With that, we ask Plan and Zoning Commission to approve our request to rezone, and we will comply with all standards inside the PUD.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, great.
How many trainees would you have there at any one time?
Maximum is roughly about 30 at any one time. That'd be on a high end. If we have folks from the WRA, from the City of Des Moines, where we, we do NCCO, which is crane training, where we teach some placing and rigging, we may have a whole unit from the City of Des Moines come up to the training facility, which would be 30 folks. Instructors are regulated on how many they can have, whether it be OSHA, or if we're doing any sort of abatement training, they're regulated on how many students they can have per class.
First of all, I love the fact that you guys want to build in Des Moines. I think that's fantastic.
Thank you.
But I got to ask the question. Why would you pick a site that's in the middle, literally surrounded by all residential? Why?
So we purchased BJ Baker's building in 2017. With the purchase of that building, we had been talking with BJ to find out if there was any land that him or his family had owned that we could purchase. He understands what our members need. He works with the mechanical trade, so he, we spoke with Greg Baker, his brother, and his family. The reason we chose that, we saw that it was towards the industrial area. That was this area here, which blue is business park. So we are up in that corner. We were, we actually looked at the site that I believe Hubble had purchased, which was a little too much for us. And with, working with BJ and explaining to him what we were looking for, he took us right up to that piece of land. And it really fit with what we do. Right across the street, the owner of Star Equipment, he wasn't able to make it tonight, but he was going to come, and he thinks it's a great idea. So was it the best choice? It was kind of our only choice.
What kind of heavy equipment will you have in the building or outside the building? And talk about any noise that it would make.
So the only piece of equipment that we own is a skid loader. With the heavy equipment, the only time we'll have heavy equipment will be for the development or if we're putting on a concrete class where we'll have a ready-mix truck, or if we have Mackinich come by with a excavator to show the students what we're utilizing out in the field, where we can show them the backup alarms. As far as the sound goes, I know that we've been up there mowing, and Lynn Pickard, who's our train director, was back in the timber near some of the residential areas, and they couldn't hear the equipment from what they told him. So I'm not sure how to answer how, how loud it would be, but from what we're hearing, we've already had equipment up there, and it wasn't a nuisance.
Any other questions?
Again, your operation, your hours of operation would be?
Seven to 4:30, seven to 5:30.
When people are off to work?
Yes.
I just had a couple about the meeting that you had with the neighborhood. What neighborhood group is that?
I believe that's Sheridan.
Okay. So the concern that we saw raised on the card, and I think you even mentioned one. One was about the storm, was about the water, and you said that they were concerned about, were they concerned about private homes as opposed to your building?
Correct.
And you're, and so they were supportive of your building because you can mitigate some of that issue?
Correct.
And then traffic came up on one of their cards, but it's just has been asked, it sounds like the bulk of your business there will be during the day.
Correct. And nobody will be in and out. They'll be there parked until class is over, and then when the shift is over.
What about the equipment? When, do you have to move that in?
There'll be times that we will have to move equipment in. Most of the times we do that, it'll be on the weekends, maybe on a Sunday day, or if Star Equipment, whenever they can get us on a schedule for delivery. But I know these guys don't like working the overtime, so they're not going to stay and wait, so it will be during the hours of operation.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the trustees of the Education Training Fund and the members here that came with us tonight, we thank you and hope you consider approving.
Well, at this time, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? You're free to come up if you want to affirm maybe what he said.
Hello, my name is Jim Piazza Jr. at 2600 Grand Avenue. Des Moines is where I office, that I live in 521 Waterbury Circle. I'm a management trustee on the Education Trust Fund. I also am a director for Heavy Highway Contractors Association, and, you know, we appreciate your reconsideration of, of this land. You know, I would note that the, it looked like the western section of the PUD is currently zoned as, I think, commercial, and in that commercial, there's a light industrial type of classification. And I think that it's just, I guess I want to reiterate the point that Mr. Weckman was stating, that we're not a heavy industrial use here. You know, I, when you start talking about heavy highway contractors and you talk about labors and construction, you know, I know that it can sound like this is going to be a really kind of evasive type of training procedure place. And I guess there is a distinction. Mr. Weckman made it. The operating engineers are located out in the country, and that's where the heavy equipment is. And, you know, these guys have been doing training indoors. As a Board of Trustees, we have met, we've looked at the PUD, and we got ahead of ourselves a little bit in terms of purchasing this land under its current zoning. And so we would like that zoning change. And as a Board of Trustees, we've talked about meeting the requirements if this were to be rezoned with the PUD possibly upgrading the fascia of that building, making sure that it has a street presence that matches, you know, what's appropriate for the community. And so we'll make that commitment to you that, you know, rather than just a metal building, we'll certainly work with the city and consider upgrades to, to the fascia of that building. We've also discussed the possibilities if it's required to move parking lot behind building. So we will work with the city. We just appreciate your reconsideration of the zoning of this land. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Piazza. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? All right, Signan, is there anyone who is opposed or has concerns that would like to come forward? All right, Signan, I don't know. Jason, is there anything else that you need to?
Yeah, I should have asked you this before, but I was trying to figure out my papers. Why is the industrial zoning called for here?
The industrial designation?
Designation, right.
Yeah, because the, that most closely matches the development pattern and uses that they're proposing versus a business park, which is more of a, you know, everything happening in a building, there's a little higher quality and standards in architecture. That's kind of the distinguishing factor between the two.
Thanks.
Jason, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You might get it. If the building was located closer to Hubble, and I see there's some drainage things they'd have to solve to make that happen, but not so far down 46th, would that change your view a little bit or not?
No, I mean, the basis of our recommendation really is just, you know, looking at the comp plan uses and what's around this and what was planned for the area, the corridor that it's on. Are there ways to?
Mitigate?
Mitigate, make it a better project? Absolutely. And I think, you know, the applicant did a nice job in narrating a little more detail as to what their proposal is and what they're willing to do. But the premise of our recommendation is the use.
Use. Okay, thanks. Okay. So I think I heard you say that even if they allow a conservation easement and public access to the, for stream maintenance, as is noted in Drainage Grading Number Two, and put in sidewalks for you, and change the character of the building from metal to, I think I heard, any sort of building material to accommodate the wishes of the planning department, and add buffering to the neighborhood with vegetation, and work with you on any watershed issues, it doesn't make any difference? Because the proposed development is not in character with the surrounding residential development.
Correct. And the designation on the land use map and the comprehensive plan. I don't dismiss or discredit that there are ways to make it a better project, but when we're making a recommendation in the plan, we're kind of a little higher up in, you know, it's a broader perspective versus how best to make a site plan work.
You've watched me long enough to know I'm always trying to find a compromise, and I thought I was by marching down that list with a cooperative applicant here. And I hear that there isn't really a compromise on this one based upon city staff.
And this is a staff recommendation. I mean, this is our recommendation to you to use as a basis for your decision-making and making a recommendation to the city council. So, yeah.
Well?
Jason, if the commission voted to rezone the property to industrial, how could we ensure that in the future, an industrial use that would be considered inappropriate could be prohibited?
And that's a great question, Will, and I appreciate you bringing that up because I would, you know, along the lines of some things we've talked about, if the commission is inclined to make some sort of recommendation of approval to the council, I would encourage you not to get in too much of a hurry to make a motion and not think about how to tie their, what they've, the details they provided you tonight, how to make sure that that's really enforceable. Or what happens in 20 years if they move into a bigger facility and the building's there and, oh, well, it's an industrial building and, just as you're saying, Will, maybe it's not the same operator anymore.
There's a lawyer behind you that wants to talk.
We get the legal perspective. The other one.
Good evening. Typically, when we're in a situation where staff has recommended denial and perhaps the commission is looking for a manner in which to approve, we recommend continuance of the item. That allows the staff and the applicant to negotiate what conditions may be placed on the rezoning. In this case, because of our kind of time crunch with the new zoning code, I hesitate to recommend that, but I do think that there is time. I would defer to Mike, but I do think that there is time to get the conditions figured out if there was a continuance granted to November 7. Thank you.
So, Glenda, just to clarify, it's a planned unit development, and so they have an application that's pending. As long as that, we have a situation where the application is filed before the effective date of the new code, so we can continue to process the PUD application beyond the effective date of the code? If a two-week continuance is needed, I think it could be easily accommodated in the schedule. They wouldn't run any risk of, you know, not complying with the new code or something. It's a planned unit development, so they could, we have the time available.
Yep, that makes sense to me. Just go from PUD to legacy PUD. So, thank you.
And still in a continuance to November 7?
Yes.
Continuum, okay. And then while you're up here, so it seemed to me yesterday, the council action was, if I heard it correctly, that the code was approved, but there is a parallel track with some of the amendments that will come back to us to review. And I'm not, you know, using this as an example, but in my mind, trying to understand what was approved yesterday by the council is in effect with the understanding that these amendments will also occur, correct?
So, yes, the ordinance was approved yesterday, which staff was really relieved, as you can imagine.
Yes, I know. You were here all day.
But the effective date stated in the ordinance is December 15th, so we're going to be acting under our current code until then.
That's the point.
The parallel-track amendments, if they're approved as set forth, will be December 16th. So basically, they'll occur right around the same time.
Okay, thank you. That helps with continuing.
And then, but again, to clarify, the PUDs can be submitted up until December 15th, any new applications, and we will continue to process those after the effective date of the new code.
So you may still see some, even after the effective date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say that based on what I've heard, I would be in favor of continuing.
So is that a motion?
Well, do you want to say something?
I was going to make that motion, so.
Oh, wait a minute. I got to close the public hearing, sorry. Now I close the public hearing.
Okay, I'll move continuance of this.
To the November 7th?
November 7th.
I agree with that. I think there's a lot of potential here.
All right, so the motion from the commission is to continue this item to our November 7th meeting. And then, do we need to say in that motion that there will be discussion with the staff? Does that give us?
I'm asking Jason to go talk to them right now to set up a meeting.
Okay. Okay, so that, removing that this item, return on November 7th. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Is that everyone? Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, gentlemen. I don't, are there any gentle ladies here? Okay. Okay, Jason, I mean, Michael, any reports?
I know, I was like, why are we in a situation? What's that?
Oh, you didn't.
Yeah, I'm going to figure it out.
Good, all right. Goodbye.
Sure.
Madam Chair, members of the commission.
No, have you seen it? No. Oh, it's so good. Is it funny?
Exactly, yeah.
I do love it. So a lot of, a lot of people have not seen it, but I recommend it. It seems kind of silly and stupid, but it's funny, and the morals are good. Yeah. Tina Fey said it was the best thing she ever did. I mean, the last time it was in it was...
Mike once.
No, no. Not a team.
We're finishing up our meeting real quick. Madam Chair, Glenda covered this briefly, what she said. Obviously, the zoning code was approved yesterday, 6-1 vote in the council. There are parallel track of amendments that are coming to you on November 7th for recommendation of the council. They will have their hearings on that December 2nd, 9th, and the 16th. So in the meantime, we are trying to get this code ready to be implemented on the 15th. That includes a ton of work with our IT department to make sure that the map is available. We're doing all of our forms, all of our review forms, application forms, and we're guessing that there's going to be agreement on the revisions because it affects code sections and everything else on the forms that we're doing, but we're moving forward. It was a great discussion yesterday with council. I just wanted to show very quickly this photo, and I found this today, and it was rather interesting. This photo is a much younger me.
Oh, my goodness.
Right there. This is circa 2003, 2004. On the right-hand side of the table are Marilyn Staples, Greg Jones, Kay Logier, and Dr. Bruce Heilmann. Mary Niderbach has her back to the camera in that photo, and then we have Roger Brown, and we also have Joe Bulkey, who was the zoning enforcement officer at the time. And so this is circa 2003, 2004. You can't read it on the screen. You can't read it on the screen, but it is an administration and enforcement section of a draft of a code that we were working on 15 years ago that never came to fruition because we had budget cuts that cut staffing in half. We never had money appropriated to do another code project for another 10 years. And so I guess today, I called each of those planning commissioners, former commissioners, because I wanted them to know that their work was very important at that time. And Greg, you were on that, but I sincerely mean that. They made the code that we have today functional for another 10 years that got us to the point where we could work through this code and get another code adopted. I guess the point I want to make is that no code is perfect. We told you that when we were working on this code. I know there are probably differing opinions on this commission. As I talked to those commissioners, they had concerns about some of the things that were in the revised code or the new code. And what I told them was is I think that there have been revisions made that have not been reported in the media to the code. I think additional revisions are going to be made that will be coming forward, not only in December, but in the future. And remember, this is a living document. There will continue to be changes made to this code as changes of priorities happen in this community. But I have no doubt that the code that was adopted yesterday has taken a quantum leap forward as far as user-friendliness for the public to understand this code and be able to find things in the code and changes hard. We told you that from the very beginning on this. I firmly believe that in short time, relative, that's three kids and a zoning code. So I had much darker hair and it's much grayer now. But I just wanted to thank you for all of your help and your guidance throughout this code process. It feels like an 800-pound gorilla has been lifted off my back, I can tell you that. And we are committed to making this code work for this community and move this community forward. And if you think about what has happened in the last five years alone in this community, we've adopted a new comprehensive plan. We've adopted the first transportation master plan for the City of Des Moines in its history. We've adopted a new neighborhood investment strategy. We've adopted a parks and rec master plan, and we've now adopted a new zoning code in five years.
I think it's time for a party.
I think it is too. So anyway, but anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your work, and I'm confident all these efforts are working together. They're in cohesion, and I think we're going to move the city forward. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your help.
Good job by you, Mike.
Mike, I wanted to say, I don't know if you were on your high school debate team when you were in high school, but yesterday, I was here with you towards the end, and I'm telling you the questions you got. You handled yourself the yeoman's job. I know this has been a large part of your life, just minor compared to what we've done, but all staff. I just thought, you know, you handled yourself, you know, with expertise.
Glenda has done, I cannot, the staff that have worked on this, everyone, it's not just the people who worked on the code. The same people that are doing the code are also processing board of adjustment applications, the applications you're seeing in front of you every two weeks. They're working on historic commission as well. They're working on neighborhood plans. And there's just, when one group is pulled over here to work on something, another group has taken up the slack somewhere else. And so I want to commend our staff and especially Glenda and those that aren't here that put in a ton of work to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other business for tonight? All right, we'll be in town.